Okay, we are recording. I'm going to share a screen to the agenda.
We have a call this morning.
Yes, sir, whenever you're ready.
Can you, can you see the agenda, President Fairman?
I believe he printed it out as well.
Okay.
I was very.
Do roll call, President Fairman?
Yeah, let's do roll call first.
Okay.
Okay, Vice President Ooten just answered the meeting.
Good.
Okay, Dr. Art Perry.
Here.
Dr. Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer. I do see that she's online, but her mic is muted. Vice President Ooten. I believe he's connecting to his audio. There he is. He is present. And President James Fairman.
Present.
Thank you.
So President Fairman is going to go to public comments. You want to go to public comments?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the board at this time? Having heard no aides, we'll move along then.
Oh, President Fairman, I believe Mr. Mosher would like to make a public comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I cannot find the raise hand button today, so I just wanted to mention I will have some comments on some of the agenda items coming up. But they would be on agenda items rather than non-agenda, which I think this is for.
Very good.
So I just, I just found the button, so I will raise it and Nolani will see when I want to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Thank you. Any other would like to address the board? If not, we're going to move along to items of study. Code enforcement officer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll give this over to Ed Roberts, who will be giving his report.
Thank you.
Good morning, President Fairman and members of the sanitary district board. Ed Roberts, district code enforcement officer. I'll be presenting the September 2020 code enforcement officer report. Ladies and gentlemen, for the month of September, I conducted a series of six productive scavenging investigations throughout the town. For the benefit of the board and the public, there's brief narrative and maps detailing the location of the contacts. If anyone has any questions regarding any of the specific contacts or the procedure, please let me know.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions? Very.
Okay, and continuing, in the month of September, I issued a total of 97 warning notices, first and final, to properties around the community. No incidents of note. And just bear with me for a moment. For the month of September as well, there were no instances of graffiti. I did see a damaged trash cart. It looked like a vehicle collided into it, and that was reported over to the resident, and he said he was going to call when he was ready to have the cart replaced. Other than that, nothing really of note to report. Does the board have any questions for me?
I have a question.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, as I've been walking and driving the streets, I see a large amount of mattresses and things on the corners of the streets or in front of the streets. Have you noticed the same thing more than once?
Yes, sir. That's normal. I won't call it normal. That seems to be a common issue that we deal with in the community when it's move out time. So especially in our multifamily neighborhoods where the populace tends to be a little bit more, I don't want to call them transient, but just there's a frequency of moving in those communities. You'll see a lot of the large item debris placed out on the roadside because the folks generally don't want to pay for a trash hauling company to come and dispose of that stuff.
When you see that, do you call the city or how do you handle that?
It varies, sir. Normally, a lot of folks from the community will call the sanitation district to voice their concerns about that, so it's very common for me to deal with complaints of that nature. Complaints that aren't resolved. Normally, it fixes itself. The City Coast Mesa maintains what they call the 199 truck. It does patrol the city, especially the alleyways, and does pick up large items that are discarded in the roadway. If the problem persists, it will span over to the code enforcement folks, and we do communicate fairly regularly during the course of the month. So yes, short answer is we do communicate concerns of that nature to the city staff.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your report.
My pleasure.
To the organic tonnage report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Really not much to report on this item, just FYI. To remind the board and the public that the organic recycling program, there has been no disruption of service to this program during the pandemic, so it's status quo. And as you can see, we're still collecting substantial amount of tonnage. We're still, also, there are still some contaminations we're dealing with, so in the future, we'll be bringing back to you a report on how we're doing to, to address the contamination levels in organics in our mixed waste carts. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott, for that report. Let's move along to records management program update.
One more item, Mr. President. I just want to mention on the solid waste diversion report, just want to remind the board or inform the board and the public, which last week, I believe it was last week, CRNR began their operations at the material recovery facility for processing recycling. That operation's been shut down for several months due to COVID. I believe now they're starting to restarting it, and it's not, it's not full, it's not in fully operation right now. They have, I think they're just still working out the kinks, so it complies with the state guidelines on COVID. But the good news is that they are starting operations again, and we can start processing recyclables here.
Okay, any questions? Let's move along to solid waste diversion report.
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. We're going to move on to records management program, and I'm going to give that over to Nolani Minway, our district clerk. She's going to give a report on this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. This item was brought to the board per the board's request and is a brief overview and review of the district's existing records management program. In 2010, the board established the district's records management program based on a recommendation by Gladwell Governmental Services. The district's records retention schedule is reviewed and updated annually by Gladwell Governmental Services to ensure that the district is current with changes in law and best practices of other agencies. The retention schedules are copyrighted documents, so they are not available to the public in this report. However, should the board or the public wish to obtain a copy of the retention schedules, they are able to do so by requesting it through me, and I will send them a PDF copy of that. When significant legal updates are made to the retention schedules, the revisions will be brought to the board for adoption. I anticipate that this will be the case in January, as there have been recent case laws regarding the deletion of emails for sequel-related projects that will alter our current schedules. All district public records are scanned into our imaging system, which is Laserfish. And in the effort of enhancing our district transparency, we've made all public records accessible on our district website. And one item of note that has been very helpful that we did in the past was to image all of our sewer atlas plans, so that not only the public has immediate access to that, but also our wastewater crew have been able to incorporate that into their city works software to access it on the field. So that has been very helpful. Once the district records have reached the end of their life cycle, the physical files are then pulled from the record system here and prepared to be sent offsite to Iron Mountain, which is our offsite storage. A list of those documents to be destroyed are then compiled. It's attached to a records destruction authorization form, and that form is circulated to the department head, the district clerk, and district council to sign off on. Once that authorization form has been completed, then Iron Mountain pulls those specified records for destruction and provides the district with a certificate of destruction once that has been completed. And that is the summary of our entire records program. If there are any questions relative, like we received public comment yesterday questioning as to why our records retention schedule is not placed online, Diane Gladwell with Gladwell Governmental Services is happy to address that directly. And her phone number is available at the bottom of the retention schedule, should they want to review that. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good report. Is there any, are there any questions about the report?
Jim, this is Mike. I have a couple of quick questions. Nolani, thank you. Good report. Are, you know, CSDA puts out some guidelines on record retention, and I'm not sure how they interpolate with, with state requirements, state directed. Gladwell has us following all those recommendations as well, I assume?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we're in compliance in terms of whatever the state requires at all times?
Yes.
Okay, and can you describe to me what Iron Mountain, Iron Mountain sounds pretty foreboding, but is it a, what kind of facility and where is it?
Well, there are different facilities under Iron Mountain. We have a facility in Fullerton. There's a facility in Santa Fe Springs. They're all throughout California and other states. It is a temperature-controlled, secure facility for all of our documents, so a lot of our permanent records, such as our archived minutes, resolutions, ordinances of that nature, have been sent to the facility so that they can be retained there securely. So should the district ever have a catastrophic event where our entire building collapses and our records are destroyed, at least the permanent records have been saved offsite.
Okay, it's not some underground salt tunnel, like they keep old movies. I mean, I assume it's a fire-secured and safety-secured.
It is definitely a fire-secured facility, yes.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
President Fairman, we have Mr. Mosher who has public comments, sir.
Mr. President, could I just add something before staff is done with this?
Absolutely.
Back in 2013, when we signed the contract with Gladwell, we also had a concern about whether or not a copyright could prevent a Public Records Act request. So we, we reserved our right to deal with that once we got a Public Records Act request. So we, we had a concern back in 2013 when we entered into the contract, and we haven't issued a final opinion on that yet. So when we get a Public Records Act request, I will provide that opinion to you. The law at that time was very unsettled about things being copyrighted. That was in the public domain, such as assessment reports and property tax things and things like that. So it was unsettled then, and it might be clearer now.
I have a question. Nolani, what percentages of our records are, are digital?
I would say all of our records are digital, sir, so anything that is approved by the board has been imaged and is available.
So they, so the hard copy stuff that goes to Iron Mountain, no, they're, they're, they're both.
Both the electronic and the hard copy files have the same retention schedule. So when the physical file gets destroyed, the electronic file gets destroyed as well.
And, and is all of that, the electronic part of it or the digital part of it, is that kept at Iron Mountain?
No, that is hosted by Laserfish, so they are completely separately hosted.
Okay.
And Mr. Mosher has public comments, sir.
Yes, thank you, President Fairman and members of the board. I had a couple of questions about this. First, as the staff report mentions, the board, in addition to this retention schedule, has in its operation code a section 1.07.030 that lists a number of documents that are retained permanently. And I assume the ordinance and operations code takes precedence over this retention schedule, so that it's honoring that commitment to keep those records permanently. And of course, that could not be, that section of the code could not be changed without the board and the public knowing it's being changed. It's not clear from the report, and I cannot quite remember, is this retention schedule a sort of administrative thing that is retained by and modified by the staff? And are the board and the public notified of the specific changes that are being made to the retention schedule? As to the more transitory documents that are not protected by the operations code, it seems important that the board be kept informed, not just that we have a program, but actually when the program is being modified from when they last saw it. And particularly important because of this copyright situation, making it difficult for anybody to, outside of the staff, to know what the current schedule is. I believe that's. Yeah, that's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
If I could respond, Mr. President, and Nolani can supplement, or she can go first if she wants, but an ordinance does take precedence, and that would be the higher priority law or regulation. We have adopted a regulation. Also, the board has adopted a regulation also with a schedule. If we're modifying the schedule, we probably need to look into that and see how that's being done and whether we need to bring another resolution back.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move. Compensation.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was actually a requested item, depending on this agenda by Mr. Mosher. Mr. Mosher's comments are attached, and once we receive those, those comments, we forward that to District Council Alan Burns to respond, and then he provided response in the attachment as well. So I'll, I'll turn this over to District Council Burns to, to review, go over the response and concerns, the addressed concerns issued, raised by Mr. Mosher. So I'll turn it over to District Council Burns.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. President. And just for the record, there was one set of concerns that I answered, and then Mr. Mosher has a new set of concerns for following up. But I can respond to the concerns that he raised originally, and that was that he believed that I had, I think it was confounded, the two different sections requiring the, with requirements for the per diem and then a requirement also under AB 1234 for how you're paid expenses. And I think I did explain that to you in the memorandum, that the per diem is actually the older code section, and the board specifically provided that it wanted to list the meetings that would qualify for the per diem. The per diem has raised, been raised over the year, but it's always been limited to six days per month. And the board, in adopting, in adopting that ordinance, left it up to each director to use their own judgment as to whether or not they would attend a meeting, and then, of course, report back on what they learned or how that was important for the district. The board has done that, and that's the way that has operated. Separately from that is the expense payment, and that's a different criteria. And it's basically, you basically get your expenses if you're doing something related to the district, as long as it's within the state. To go out of state, you have to get board approval, and that would be a prior, well, it would, I don't know that that's happened much, but that's, you require board approval. And that's a detailed expense requirement with about actual and necessary expenses. There's lots of law and regulations on it about, you know, what, how much of a hotel you can get, and, you know, your meals and things like that. And we've adopted all of that in our, in our code, and the board has complied with that and report on that as required by the law. And then the other part was secretary compensation, and I believe the code says that the secretary shall be provided different compensation. And, or maybe provided, let's get the words right. The secretary shall, of the sanitary board shall receive compensation to be set by the sanitary district board, which compensation shall be in lieu of other compensation to which he or she, to which he or she may be entitled by reason of attendance at the meeting or meetings of the sanitary board. And the issue is, you know, I, I surmised, and from my experience with other sanitary districts, sometimes there were extra duties that a secretary had, and that would compensate them for that. In our case, the sec, we have a professional secretary, the executive secretary, Nolani, who is paid well to be well-trained and way beyond what a board director secretary could do. So the board secretary duty is basically signing, just like the president, and there are certain documents that the board president and secretary must sign, and that's the function they maintain. So we have paid that secretary the same, and whether the law says you must pay them differently, or you must call it out a certain way, it just, it doesn't seem to be an argument that has much merit, because if you have a greater power, that assumes a lesser power. So if you, the legislature says you can pay the secretary anything you want, so you say, okay, we're going to pay him exactly like we paid the other directors. Nobody could challenge that in court and say, oh, you violated the statute. We obviously have the authority to do it, so I think we're, you know, that's, that's kind of a non, a non-issue. I think that answers the questions Mr. Mosher had the first round, maybe not to his liking, but at least answers them. And then I think he had another round of questions, so I'm not sure I should respond to that until he's made those comments. But I will be prepared to respond to some of those comments after he's made them.
Well, should we have him present those comments now?
I believe that would be appropriate.
Before we.
Memo, which is probably going to be greater than the three minutes he's allotted, so I think we've all had a chance to look at some of his comments.
Before, before the member of the public speaks, this is Mike. Can, can I ask Alan a couple of questions, Jim?
Absolutely.
Alan, from the very beginning of the discussion on this, this item, and it's been a little bit ongoing, has our position as a district changed, or, I mean, from the very beginning of your advice, we've pretty, we've pretty much held fast to what, what we've been doing, and you haven't changed your opinion from the beginning of this discussion, have you?
No.
Okay, and the other question I have is, is for you and for, for Scott. Since we haven't changed the opinion, since we haven't changed the way we operate since the beginning of this discussion, is there any idea how much time has been spent by staff and by council on this matter? When I was a city councilman, we used to have a stipulation that if a council member, a member of the public was going to ask staff or anybody to take on a project that exceeded, and I don't remember what the requirement was, but we had to get a board approval to do that. So I, I'm curious to know whether this item, how much time and energy has been spent by staff and legal counsel?
I can, I can say a considerable amount has been spent responding to the questions, but you do, there is a provision in our ordinance that provides that if a board of director is to, a board member, I'm sorry, is to ask for a project, that they have to go through the general manager to make sure you don't overwhelm our resources. So we don't have the same requirement when a member of the public asks a question. And I guess if I was at fault in trying to be prepared to answer the question, then I take responsibility for that if I should have gotten permission. But I wanted to be prepared, and then there's more questions, and that will require more work. So if at some point the board decides, you know, we really don't want you to work on that, then I would appreciate it if you'd tell me that.
No, Alan, I'm not looking for any blame or any fault. I, you did exactly, you did exactly what I think all of us would expect you to do. But, but something you just said, and I would ask Scott to take a look at, maybe we need to put that same requirement that board members have on request from the public, that if a project is going to exceed so many resources or time, that the general manager and maybe the board have a chance to approve whether that's going to go forward or not. It seems like we haven't changed anything on this matter, but yet we're spending a lot of time on it, and I'm just concerned that, that it could overwhelm at some point.
Well, Scott, Scott needs to oversee that and get in on enforcing whatever we need to enforce. So any other comments or? Okay. Closing items?
I think Mr. Mosher wanted to. Some comments pending.
Yes.
I think Mr. Mosher had, wanted to make some public comments on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
TV, you don't know how to act.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, President Fairman, members of the board. First, I wanted to say I actually agree with the comments made by Director Schaefer, and I want to make it clear. I am concerned about expenditure district funds. I did not, I submitted comments, I did not, and have never requested a response to the comments. What I asked for is that you schedule a meeting so that you and the public could discuss this matter, which is what is happening today. The, the two issues I raised were whether the district was complying with the provision that your council has read from the Health and Safety Code. I appreciate his legal analysis. I'm not an attorney. What I'm trying to help the district with is to ensure that it's following best practices. The Health and Safety Code is clearly envisioning the secretary position, the secretary to the board, as a professional position that would require special compensation for the services that are provided, and as District Council mentioned, it's primarily Nolani who is providing those. So when a discussion was scheduled, which I had no right to demand that you do, but I'm very appreciative that you have scheduled this discussion, attempted to survey how other sanitary districts in California operate. And I did not research all 60 other sanitary districts. But based on my, the ones that I did look at, having a board member serve as the secretary is not the common practice. At least two-thirds of the districts do not have a board member serving as the secretary. The most common structure is simply having a president, a vice president, and three other directors. A surprising number actually named one of the directors as the treasurer. And I, like our secretary not really being the secretary, I'm doubtful that those board treasurers are actually acting as the treasurer. So Coast Mesa Sanitary District is following a not uncommon, but somewhat unusual practice of having a board member serve as the secretary to the board. The other question I raised was the language in the Health and Safety Code that says for the stipend to be paid in addition for things other than actual board meetings, that service has to be at the request of the board. So I looked at how much stipend is collected in the other 60 districts, which is on the state controller's website, and I was surprised to see that two. And I was surprised to see that two of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Directors are consistently at the top of the list. The top two out of the three hundred in California, and all of the directors are in the top ten out of California. So how does that happen? It's a combination of the district offering a very generous stipend per meeting, and also being one of the very few districts in which the directors put in for the maximum six meetings per month, or seventy-two per year. And as to how the compensation is reported, and why the other districts are lower amounts, and what the best practice is, it is common in the other districts where at their, at one meeting during the year, often their first meeting in January, they assign who will be going to what meetings, like who is assigned to the Citizens Advisory Committee, who is assigned to go to IS Doc or other meetings that you go to. And that information is reported, because when you do that, it enables you to get compensation that is for doing something other than a board meeting in service. FPPC regulations actually require that appointment, at least as the other districts interpret it, to be reported on a form called eight oh six. And Costa Mesa Sanitary District on its website currently has a form eight oh six. It is not only out of date, but the only two appointments it lists are, one, I believe it's of Director Ferriman with an alternate, to go to the OCSD meetings, and it lists the compensation paid by OCSD. It does not make it clear whether you can also act for own stipend. And the other one is the Santa Ana River flood protection, and it's, as the compensation for attending those meetings is zero, which is not correct, because directors actually collect two hundred ninety-five dollars if you go in there. So all I can tell you is that most districts are more transparent in a number of ways, but especially by listing on the eight oh, form eight oh six, so that the public and the staff and everybody is aware, out of your lengthy smorgasbord of eligible meetings, what meetings people have actually been requested to go to, and that they will. And then there's a final question, which I actually have not researched. Of a code that was yes, have I spoken too long?
I think you cut out.
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, the final thing I wanted to mention was about the two hundred ninety-five dollar compensation we have now. I believe probably exceeds what the state legislature intended for sanitary district boards to do. In the year two thousand, they adopted a regulation the compensation at one hundred dollars with a right to raise it five percent per year. And there's a question of interpretation. But this board instantly raised its compensation in two thousand, January two thousand one, to a hundred and seventy dollars, which it's taking as the base for the five percent increases. I think the legislature's intent was in two thousand, you were supposed to start with one hundred dollars, and from then you could go on five percent. This district interpreted that their compensation had been set in nineteen eighty-seven at a hundred dollars, and so they could increase by five percent. Anyway, I do not believe the other districts have interpreted that way. So that's a part of the picture, why Costa Mesa Sanitary District is at the top of the list out of the three hundred directors. I've babbled on longer than I should, so thank you for listening, and I'm glad you are having this discussion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Could, could I make two brief comments, Mr. President? Say yes. Somebody talking right now?
I think you go ahead.
I'm here, I'm hearing somebody talk, okay. I just wanted to say that I think the form, the state form that Noelani posts, that's for when you're appointed to another agency, and you receive compensation over a certain amount for being appointed to another body. By performing a day's service for this body, you don't, you haven't joined another body. You may be attending, but you're not, you didn't get appointed to another body that pays you money. That's what I think is the purpose of the eight oh, I think it's eight oh two form, maybe it's. And secondly, we did look into how you calculated the five percent increase, and we followed the CASA guidelines and the CSDA guidelines. We did spend a lot of research on that. And we believe that you could have actually been paid a little bit over three hundred dollars for your per diem. And the board made a determination that they didn't want to be paid over three hundred dollars, so they arbitrarily picked the number they're paid at, so there would be less than three hundred dollars. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alan. Any other comments?
Yeah, Jim, this is Mike. I've got a couple other quick comments.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, in, in reading over the submitted comments from the member of the public, a couple of things struck me as accusatory, and, and, and I, I want to take exception to a couple of things. And, and just for the benefit of the public, it, it was stated that, that by going to some of these meetings, we as, or by not attending some of these board meetings, that we as members of our board are doing a disservice to our other members, and that all we do, basically, the insinuation was that all we do is sit at these meetings and don't do anything. You know, I've attended a lot of meetings, in fact, I, I regularly, most of us regularly exceed our, our six limit. We go to a lot of meetings. I attend these meetings to learn things, to, to absorb things that I can use to make better policy for our district. You know, we go to a lot of meetings, and there isn't a lot that directly affects us. But I don't want to miss the opportunity by going to a meeting of missing something that could help me make better policy for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. So to characterize us as going to meetings simply to get a stipend, I think is three hundred and sixty degrees wrong. We go to these meetings, I think all of us go to these meetings to learn, and, and I know I do, and I know everybody else on this board does. So to characterize us as simply going to a meeting just to earn a stipend is, is out of character. The other thing I want to take exception to is, was a comment made in the public comment, in the, in the memo, that you know, our stipend, it's a lucrative benefit to us with this stipend. I don't know about the rest of you, but Costa Mesa Sanitary District isn't making me lucratively rich. I spend a lot of time away from my family and from my business to attend meetings and to do the things that are in the best interest of Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Yes, I volunteered for this position. I ran for election, and the, and the public elected me to office. But I don't do this for, for any monetary gain. I think Alan very succinctly pointed out that when we raised our stipend, it was well within the guidelines put forward. And having served on this district back in the nineties with, with Jim and Art, and the hundred dollars was, was back then, and, and we spend a lot of time, we, all of us in this district are, are, are strongly devoted to making this the best district in the state of California. I don't want to be compared with some small sanitary district in Northern California that can't compare with us. We're doing the best we can, so I just wanted to make those points that I'm not doing this to make a lot of money. I'm not doing this to make any money. And, and number two, I take these meetings very seriously. And I think the guidelines that we've set forward as far as us attending these meetings, we, Alan says they're, they're, they're in conformance, so I'm comfortable with that. In terms of direction for staff on this matter, I think we need to, to move on. I think we're done with this. We've established what we need to do, so my recommendation to staff is that we close the matter and move on.
Well said, Mike.
I, I think so too. Do we, do we need a motion on that, or the, just a direction from the board?
Do either one.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
What's that?
Either, either one.
Oh, either one. Well, I think just to verify, you know, our intent, that, that we need to make a motion and, and have it become policy.
All right, I'll, Jim, this, Mike, I'll make a motion that we receive and file this report, and that in terms of per diem and stipend, that we continue to follow the established procedures of the district.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Looking upon what we're doing is, is, yeah.
Hey, Jim, I think we're at oral communications.
Yes.
Hey, Noelani, that motion pass unanimous?
Yes, sir, it did.
Thank you.
So, is, Mr. Mr. President, this is the closing items, opportunity for oral communications for, by the board of directors?
The only thing I had, Scott, was did you look into that last thing that the CSDA sent us about the city's being responsible for collection of the different items, you know?
Yes, we plan to bring that to a future study session meeting if you want. We, we did take a look at, do you want to have that discussion at a, at a study session?
I think so. I think we need to be up on, up on what's really happening, and so the city can know about it also. I don't think, I don't know if they're aware of it or not, but we can discuss it.
Sure, sure, not a problem.
Jim, this is Mike. I, I, Scott, Ed was talking about a proliferation of mattresses and, or Art was, I'm sorry. I, I, I think it's for a study session item, could we get an update on what the city's policy on what they pick up and where they pick up? I mean, mattresses and things like that are generally the purview of the city, but can we get a refresher on what the city's policy is on how they handle those things?
Sure.
And, and is, is, is that eligible for a CRNR large item pickup, mattresses?
Yes.
Like, because I've seen signs on some of them that, you know, have the city or CRNR's name on it.
Yes, I think that the big issue is, are the multifamily units. That's, that's, I think that's the condos and the apartments. When they get new renters, they just dump their mattress out there, and then that does, that doesn't prevail, that doesn't prevail to us, that goes to the city.
Okay.
Is President Ferriman still there? President Ferriman?
Yes.
Okay, so just, this finger is still there, so we're still, we're still taking oral communication.
Ed, this is Mike. Ed, one other comment. Within twenty, twenty-one days from now, Art and Jim are looking at the polling places, so good luck to both you guys and best wishes, okay?
Hey, thanks, Mike.
So, Mr. President, I don't hear any other comments, so do we, is it time to adjourn the meeting, Mr. President?
This connection seems a little bit dodgy right now, Scott.
Okay.
Maybe Bob could do it.
Yeah, Vice President, do you want to take order?
Yeah, yeah, if there are no other comments by the board or public, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thanks, guys. Good seeing you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, have a good day.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, guys.